Good evening. This meeting of May 13th, 2013, the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barton?
Here.
Mr. Bytine?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Kruger?
Present.
Ms. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Strelo?
Here. Thank you. We are thrilled to have with us tonight Troop 7113 from Fulton Elementary School who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi, my name's Alexis Rikers. I'm in fourth grade.
Hi, my name's Amanda Rose. I'm in third grade.
My name's Emma Hastings, and I'm in third grade.
My name's Emily Papasell, and I'm in first grade.
My name's Clara Bennett, and I'm in fourth grade.
My name's Elise Swobin, and I'm in second grade.
My name's Chloe Hemming, and I'm kindergarten.
My name is Emma Hemming, and I'm in second grade.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow. Something else.
That's awesome.
Oh, God. Holy smokes. I've led you.
Yes. We were led.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved in second that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on April 8th and the open meeting on April 23rd and the special meeting on April 23rd, 2013, as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved in second that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on April 8th, the open meeting on April 23rd, and the special meeting on April 23rd, 2013, as submitted. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's see, school board recognition.
In honor of School Board Recognition Month, we'd like to take a moment and thank the school board for the time and effort that they put into the betterment of the educational process for all the students, 10,500 students who go to school in the Dubuque community school system, have certificates to hand out, but far more important, you have a packet of letters written by some students in the district for you to take home and enjoy with you. So, it's usually some pretty fun reading. But, for those who aren't familiar with the job of a school board, you might think that they meet once a month for an hour or two for a meeting, and the reality is, it's more like a part-time job. Most of these folks put in many hours each week and are elected by the community to provide oversight for the district. So, we just want to take a minute and say thank you and give you a certificate, but more importantly, let you hear the thanks from the students whose lives you affect. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Strelo?
Thank you.
Don't we get to go over the red carpet?
You can come down. Tom's been waiting.
This brings us to our red carpet recognition, and we're thrilled again this evening to welcome Terry Slade and the Penn Avenue Singers to the red carpet. And board members will slide down the side, so we can take it all. Wow.
Thank you so much for inviting us to be here with you today. These students are most of Penn Avenue. Some of them have soccer games tonight, so they're not here. This is just four minutes of their presentation, which actually takes 25 minutes, so they selected a little tiny piece of it for you. And it's the Respect Program that they've done in the elementary and the middle schools.
This is our pledge. We will respect others.
We will respect others.
We will help those who are bullied.
We will help those who are bullied.
We will include those who are left out.
We will include those who are left out.
If you know someone who is being bullied, we will tell an adult.
We will not turn our backs.
We will lend support.
Remember, it won't always be like this. It will get better.
You have a great life ahead of you.
Promise.
I see your true colors shining through. I see your true colors, and that's why I love you. So, don't be afraid to let it show. You with the sad eyes, don't be discouraged, I realize. It's hard to take courage in a world full of people. You can lose sight of it all in the darkness, oh, inside you makes you feel so small. But I see your true colors shining through. I see your true colors, and that's why I love you. So, don't be afraid to let it show. Your true colors, your true colors are beautiful like a rainbow. Don't be unhappy, can't remember when I last saw you laughing. If this world makes you crazy and you've taken all you can bear, you'll call me up because you know I'll be there. And I see your true colors shining through. I see your true colors, and that's why I love you. So, don't be afraid to let it show. Your true colors, your true colors, your true colors shining through. I see your true colors, and that's why I love you. So, don't be afraid to let it show. Your true colors, 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 your true colors.
Maybe if Terry or somebody wanted to come up and explain the totality of your program and who you perform it for and why you put this all together, that would be great.
I don't want to leave, because I just want to talk about this.
So, if everybody else maybe came to the side and somebody came to the podium, we'll make sure we get it on TV just right here and tell us what Penn Avenue's got going on.
The main goal of Penn Avenue is to show kids from the youngest age of kindergarten to middle school age that no matter who you are, your color, or your race, or sexuality, or whatever makes you different or sets you apart from anybody, that you are important and no matter what, someone will always be there for you. And we're showing them through singing and dancing that it's okay that you get up in front of people and to be yourself because those who love you don't judge you for it. And as a whole group, I feel like we connect and we feel like we can be ourselves around each other, and that's what we're trying to show kids our age or younger, that it's okay to be who you are.
And where have you performed this, or will you be performing this?
We've performed it at multiple elementary schools like Irving, Carver, and we've also performed at Washington, Jefferson, and we've performed it in front of our peers as well. So, that was fun. And I think it's so important as a young kid, of course, in high school, how important it is to be yourself and know how to be yourself and for other people not to judge you. And people, kids are so worried about being judged for being who they are, and like Alea said, their color, their sexuality, and showing younger kids, you know, even younger than middle schools, to show them from high schoolers how important it is to be who you are and to not care what others think and to just support each other and love each other.
That's a great message. I think they take it very well from high school students that they look up to, so we appreciate it.
I just have a few things to add.
Aye.
Thank you so much, Alea and Drew. They're great spokeswomen for our group. The students have been performing this since last fall, where they performed it at our Respect Retreat for our ninth graders at Hempstead, and they've also performed it at some of the anti-bullying rallies in Dubuque and in Farley. And they performed at the Riverview Center and also for the Community Foundation of Greater Dubuque for their gathering that they had down at the Rochek Building earlier this year. And they have performed, I think, at about 14 schools. Yeah. Yeah. So, just wanted to add those things, but you've done a great job. And the students wrote the script and selected all of the music and did their own choreography. And we also have a PowerPoint that Brighton-Bowery put together for us that we use that has inspirational pictures for the kids, too.
Well, it's outstanding. On behalf of the entire board, let us salute you for the message that you're sending, and it's great that you're sending this message entirely, this message, not only to your peers and to your, and to the younger kids in the district, but there's a lot of adults that could use the same message, so don't be afraid to communicate it upwards as well in terms of age.
The architects were up dancing.
Yeah. But thank you for all that you're doing and the way that you're doing it. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much for having us. Thank you.
All right. This brings us to board salutes, and Mr. Bytine, I believe you have one.
I do, Mr. President. I had the opportunity and pleasure of attending two events in late April. The first was the leadership event at Lincoln School. I had an opportunity to observe in a classroom and participate in a school-wide assembly where the kids had a presentation that focused on the seven habits of successful leadership, student leadership. So, my congratulations go to Principal Donna Lowen and the entire staff and all the folks and kids who participated in that event. It was, I hadn't sat on a wooden bench for an hour in a long time, and it was really quite enjoyable. The second event was on Friday, April 26th. I attended a special presentation at the Grand Opera House on the third-grade reading program, which, as many of you know, knits together a number of different institutions within Dubuque that every child of you promise, St. Mark's, and certainly our school district, on the status of the implementation of the plan that led to Dubuque receiving the All American City Award. It was inspiring to see how Dubuque is at the forefront of inter-institutional cooperation. The gentleman who presented on behalf of the agency that awarded the All American City Award said that Dubuque was the model community for them and that they'll continue to watch with interest as we develop our plan and execute it. And I want to give special credit to staff, Linda Vane and several others who presented. I know, Stan, you also presented. The district is doing more than their part to ensure that we have a third-grade literacy program that is the model of any other district in our area, so I want to congratulate them on the good work that they're doing. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Bytine.
Mr. President, I have a few, I have another number here. I'm sorry to, but we've got a lot of great things going on. First, I would like to congratulate and send a board salute to Norm Anderson and the Hempstead Boys Track Team and to Coach Pat Murphy and the Senior Girls Track Team on winning the senior championship, or the city track championships. They were both very emotional wins for both teams.
George, could you, your mic's not on, I can't hear you.
So, a board salute to Norm Anderson and the Hempstead Boys Track Team, Coach Pat Murphy and the Senior Girls Track Team on winning the city championships in track. They were both very emotional, outstanding performances by both teams. I'd like to, I had the opportunity to attend the opening night at the University of Dubuque's new Heritage Center. I'd like to extend a board salute to Dr. Jeff Bullock and the University of Dubuque. I'm going to get this figured out one of these days. To Jeff Bullock and the University of Dubuque on their fantastic new center. It was absolutely spectacular and a great addition to the fine arts community in the city of Dubuque. Earlier this week, many of us had the opportunity to attend the DEA dinner, which I would say was one of the best DEA teacher recognition dinners that I've been to since I've been on the school board, and I would like to send a board salute to T.J. Potts, who won the Administrator Award, and to Donna Schmidt and all of the candidates who won, who were up for Teacher of the Year. Donna Schmidt was the Teacher of the Year. I had the privilege of sitting with Teresa Cheever, who's been with the district seven years. She went, got her teacher degree later in life and works with our Alternative Students and Jones, and was just absolutely inspirational. Terry Slade, who was here earlier today with the Hempstead Penn Avenue Singers, was up for Teacher of the Year, and my daughter's math teacher, Julia Jorgensen, was up for Teacher of the Year. So, to all the teachers who are up for Teacher of the Year, I send a board salute on behalf of the Dubuque Community School District School Board, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Will you now turn his mic off? Or are you going to leave it on? Perfect, thank you. Are there any other board salutes?
What do you know about computers, Matt?
All right. Thank you. All right. That brings us to the public hearing on the Washington Middle School Multipurpose Room Edition, and Mr. Burkhart is going to give us an overview.
Good evening, board members. Superintendent Ryan Gens, good evening. If you'll allow me to give you a brief background on the project. The project was originally planned to be a one-story multipurpose room on the north side of the existing building. The cafeteria expansion was going to double as a wrestling room because the existing cafeteria has columns there, and it really makes it unsafe for wrestling. After considering the cost of a second story in the future, the decision was made to add a second story, providing space for the band room and stage access. And I'd like to also remind you that all areas of the renovation will include air conditioning as well as the existing cafeteria. The district will also use the project as an opportunity to remove existing cafeteria floor, which contains asbestos, and will take the opportunity to eliminate that. I'd like to remind you of some of the benefits of the renovation are, the lunches will be reduced from seven to six periods. The lunch period will decrease approximately 25 minutes, going from an hour and 45 minutes to about an hour and 25 minutes. The students will no longer be required to carry their lunch to the gym, and the students will be able to enter the stage area out of the rain and snow as they have in the past. Mr. Burns worked with the design group and stressed that orchestra, band, and choir interest is growing, and he believes that trend will continue, and he's told me that this renovation will help him meet those needs. Other possibilities he has identified are staff meetings and possible breakfast program expansions. The cafeteria, kitchen, and serving line improvements are planned to be completed for the start of school by August 13th, and although I'll report on bids later, the overall estimated project cost was $1,590,000. And on April 18th, the lowest responsible bid was $1,192,000, and that allowed us to lower the projected cost to $1,480,000. If it's approved this evening, then contract bonds and insurance will be assembled and brought to you at the next board meeting. The project's scheduled to start June 17th with completion planned for March 28th.
All right. Any questions from Mr. Burkhart and overview?
I move that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the Washington Middle School Multipurpose Room Edition and authorize payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald.
Second. It's been moved in second that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the Washington Middle School Multipurpose Room Edition and authorize payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow public comments.
Second. It's been moved in second that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow public comments. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We are now in a public forum. Anybody within the shouted, my voice hears, would like to come forward and make any comments relative to the Washington Middle School project? This would be your opportunity.
I move that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session.
Second. It's been moved in second that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution adopting plans, specifications, form, and contract, and estimate total cost of the Washington Middle School Multipurpose Room Edition, whereas on the 11th day of March, 2013, plans, specifications, form of contract, and the estimated total cost were initially filed with the Secretary for the construction of certain public improvements described in general as the Washington Middle School Multipurpose Room Edition, and whereas a notice of public hearing on the plan, specification, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for said public improvements was published as required by law. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Dubuque Community School District, Dubuque, Iowa, Section 1, that the said plan, specifications, form of contract, and the estimated total cost of the Washington Middle School Multipurpose Room Edition are hereby approved and adopted as the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost of said public improvement as described in the preamble of this resolution. Thank you. You're going to need it next.
Oh, no, I'm not. It's been moved in second that the Board of Education approve the resolution as read. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Reporting of bids?
Six bids were received on April 18th, and they are as follows. Porsting Construction, $1,192,000. Hiller Brand Construction, $1,314,620. Sheets General Construction, $1,219,000. Conlon Construction, $1,230,000. Larson Construction Company, $1,224,000. Clower Development Corporation, $1,367,000. You'll also find in your board packet a letter of recommendation from Straka Johnson Architects recommending awarding the contract to Porsting Construction for the base bid of $1,192,000, and Buildings and Grounds concurs with that recommendation.
Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution making award of construction contract. Be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Dubuque Community School District, Dubuque, Iowa, Section 1, that the following bid for the Washington Middle School Multipurpose Room Edition, described in the plans and specifications heretofore adopted by this board, is accepted, the same being the lowest responsive responsible bid received for such work as follows. Contractor, Porsting Construction of Dubuque, Iowa, amount of base bid, $1,192,000. Section 2, that the President and Secretary are hereby directed to execute a contract with the contractor, such contract not to be binding on the district until approval by this board.
Second. It's been moved in second that the Board of Education approve the resolution making award of construction contract as read. Any discussion?
Mr. President, we've done a lot of great projects on the school board since I've been on the school board as far as construction projects, and my children attended Washington Middle School, and while this is a relatively small project, I don't think there's been a project that's had the dollar-for-dollar impact of changing a building that this project will have. The cafeteria at Washington was undersized. Previously, they had to have six or more different dinner periods that stretched the dinner, I mean, my daughter went to school at 6:30, didn't have lunch till 12:45 when she went to school there. So, this is going to have a tremendous impact on Washington Middle School, and it's an absolutely fantastic project, so I'm very excited about it.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Brings us to the public hearing on the senior high school small gym floor project. Mr. Burkhart, will you give us a little overview, please?
You'll probably recall this project. We had several complaints from citizens that said the floor was too slippery and safety issues existed. So, we asked for EMC Insurance Company to come in and do a friction test on that floor and other existing gym floors. After receiving their report and going through the results and taking into consideration that the existing rubber floor was ending its 15- to 20-year life period, it was installed in 1997, it was reasonable for us to make the recommendation that we bring forward the proposal to replace the rubber floor with a new wood floor similar to that at Carver. In addition to replacing the rubber floor, we're recommending improvements be made to the existing wooden doors, and we want to do a new entry that will be constructed to meet ADA access issues. We'll also use this project, too, as an opportunity to remove existing asbestos floor, which has been encapsulated until now, so we'll remove that from that area also. If the project's approved, work can start on June 17th. It'll be completed by July 31st, and there'll be no interruption of summer events that may have used the small gym.
Any questions from Mr. Burkhart? Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the senior high school small gym floor project and authorize payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald.
Second. It's been moved in second that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the senior high school gym floor project and authorize payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow public comments.
Second. It's been moved in second that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow public comments. Is there anyone in the room that would like to comment on the Washington, or on the senior high school? After I vote, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Now, we're open for public comment. Anybody wishing to comment?
I move that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session.
Second. It's moved in second that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education, the Board of Education approve the resolution adopting plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated total cost of the senior high school small gym floor project, whereas on the 8th day of April, 2013, plans, specifications, form of contract, and the estimated total cost were initially filed with the Secretary for the construction of certain public improvements described in general as the senior high school small gym floor project, and whereas a notice of hearing on the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the said public improvements was published as required by law. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Dubuque Community School District, Dubuque, Iowa, Section 1, that the said plan, specifications, form of contract, and the estimated total cost for the senior high school small gym floor project are hereby approved and adopted as the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated total cost for said public improvement as described in the preamble of this resolution.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the resolution adopting plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated total cost of the senior high school small gym floor project as read. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Reporting of the bids, please.
Three bids were received on May 1st, and they are Portson Construction, base bid of $129,000. Clower Construction Company, a base bid of $142,298. And TriCon General Construction, a base bid of $135,580. The amounts I just spoke about do include a $4,000 floor leveling allowance, as we expect some issues with that. You'll find a letter of recommendation in your packet from Anderson Design. And we recommend the awarding of that contract to Portson Construction for that $129,000 base bid.
Any questions for Mr. Burkhart? Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution making award of construction contract. Be it resolved by the Board of Education of Dubuque Community School District, Dubuque, Iowa. Section 1, that the following bid for the senior high school small gym floor project, described in the plans and specifications heretofore adopted by this board, is accepted. And the same being the lowest responsive responsible bid received for such work as follows. Contractor, Portson Construction of Dubuque, Iowa. Amount of base bid, $129,000, plus asbestos removal for a total of $163,000. Section 2, that the President and Secretary are hereby directed to execute a contract with the contractor. Such contract not to be binding on the district until approved by this board.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the resolution making award of a construction contract as read. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. Persons wishing to address the board will... Oops, sorry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Turn your microphone off in a second. Any opposed? Motion carries. Any persons wishing to address the board will do so at this time. Mike, on behalf of fellow board members at this time, I'd like to invite any member of the audience step forward to the microphone with comments about items of interest or concern. Please start by stating your name and address. It'd be appreciated if you'd limit your comments to three minutes so we can keep the meeting moving and allow others an opportunity to speak. We ask that you remember that the Iowa law prohibits us from discussing specific employees or their job performance. We would appreciate it if you would refrain from using names of employees in your comments. The board's role is to listen to your comments, but a response and/or action will not be forthcoming if the topic is not an agenda item. If you have thoughts to share about items that are included as topics for tonight's meeting, we would invite those comments at this time also. Thank you for your support of the school district.
I appreciate that, school board. My name's Mike Portson, Portson Construction. I live at 16748 Hunter Hills Drive, Piazza. Reason I asked to talk to this board, there's a lot of stuff that sort of upset me. I was very supportive of Hempstead Project until I found out that a lot of bid shopping was going on. And I thought I'd bring it to your attention. You guys are changing a lot of ways how you're doing your bids. One time you need subcontract lists, next time you need subcontract lists within 24 hours. I think you gotta come up with one way of doing it, not several different ways doing it. Give you a little thoughts. We were told by Geisler Sheepmellow that we were low hydronic bidder with them on the Hempstead Project. So after we were low, we knew we had the job for approximately three weeks to a month. And all of a sudden, Geisler received a bid, I mean, a letter of intent from Conlon telling them they had to use Winona controls for hydronic piping rather than to do plumbing heating, which is a sort of being... I made a copy of this letter of intent that I passed, have you each look at? And I don't know why a general contractors can tell itself who they got to use on a project is number one. Being a taxpayer of the Dubuque County and support the Hempstead Project, and now finding out our taxpayer dollars going up to Minnesota, don't sit very good with me. I understand there was other bid shopping done after the bids were let. There's two or three people out in the audience, Dane was on subcontractor list that's no longer doing the job anymore. And here we gotta stick to the subcontract list that's submitted to use at bid time, or we gotta get rid of the subcontractor list, one or the other. I mean, we all worked very hard to try to be low. We worked very hard, tried to make sure we're doing our bids right. And I just don't have a good feeling about find out you're low one minute and find out you don't get the job the next minute. And that's why I wanted to speak to you as well. Appreciate just comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Are there any other persons in the chamber wishing to address the board?
Good evening. My name is Tim Conlon. I'm with Conlon Construction Company in Dubuque. I live at 480 Woodward Place, Dubuque. I would like to first address some of the comments that Mike made. We are a contractor who's been in business here for 110 years. And we do not support bid shopping in any way, form. We are members of the Master Builders of Iowa. And the tenants of the Master Builders is skill, responsibility, and integrity. And I'm a past president, as are my brother and cousin. So we have supported the tenants of the Master Builders for all of our years that we've been members. I can't speak to the discussion that went on between Geisler and his subcontractors, bidders. I do know that we, our estimators had conversations with Geisler with regard to who was going to be used when we talked about the plumbing bidder that we had who was low, and the advantages to having the same contractor do the heat piping and the plumbing for the, basically for the benefit of you. It had no dollar impact on us. I don't think it had any dollar impact on Geisler. And that was why the, as I understand it, the letter of intent, I didn't write it, it was our estimators, was specific to who was going to be used with the heat piping part of the contract. With regard to changes in the bid list, we, as you probably know, there is a problem with the bidding process in the public sector. And that is that there is no time literally to put a bid together of this complexity in the way that it has to be done. What happens is subcontractors and suppliers and their sub-subcontractors are often afraid to submit a proposal to us as general bidders in a timely fashion. They typically come in between 1:00 and 2:00 in the afternoon. Many of them, I think we counted over 30 that came in after 1:30 in the afternoon. When we submit, when our person that came to submit the bid here left the office, he had a list of our, at the time, our low bid contractors. During the time that last half an hour, three or four of those contractors changed. The numbers came back with other bidders who were lower bidders. So we were, we had to use the lower bidder if we wanted to be competitive with the, with this project. I can't, I can tell you that that problem is written about in the Public Owners Guide to construction law in Iowa. And it is inherent in the way that the bidding process has to take place in public bidding. So I don't know of anybody who can analyze 50 bids in a half an hour and determine among those bidders who is low when there are, I think there were seven alternates on this project and five different unit prices that had to be filled in. And when a new bidder comes in and he's low, you have to look at all those alternates to find out if those keep him low or make him not low. It's a very difficult thing to do in the last minute. We put our name on the line. We have a bonding company that backs us up. We do everything we can to keep from making mistakes. But inherent in this process, it's unfortunate, but we all have to do it, that these kinds of things can happen. So that's my explanation. I don't like the word bid shopping. I don't like being accused of bid shopping. We don't do it. We don't like it when other people do it, whether they're subcontractors or suppliers or the sub-subcontractors. So thank you for the opportunity to talk.
Thank you.
My name is Kevin Epperali. I'm the architect for the project. My address is 1133 Arrowhead Drive with FEH Architects. I think it'd be good just to explain why we even have that. For this, for most of our projects, we do require a subcontractor list. For this project, we actually identified specifically which ones we'd like. During the bidding process, we realized that this was such a large project, it was going to be difficult to get the final list right at bid time. So in our addendum, one of our addendums, we gave extended time period for that. But we still did ask for them to provide it. And we did receive that list. I think there were 18 names on that list from Conlon Construction. We immediately confirmed their bid, that they were still willing to go to bid with a phone call before the bidding of some other projects were completed. We were told at that time that they did get a couple other numbers that came in a little bit lower than what was on the bid form, but they did have time to provide a final list. So just wanted to confirm that. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those as your consultant.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Evening.
Evening.
Thanks for letting me talk. My name's Pete Wise. I own Interstate Pipe and Supply Company in Dubuque. We are an industrial wholesale supplier. I live at 1150 Tressa in town. And as a result of Winona and out-of-town places at other times getting these bids, when they come into town, we supply the pipe, valves, fittings, and such as what they're talking about. So Winona gets this job, and now not only isn't a Dubuque contractor, mechanical contractor getting the work, now places like myself that have businesses in Dubuque are not going to see anything. I've already been told by them I was like 2% high on a substantial bid for pipe, valves, fittings that they gave to an out-of-town firm that's going to come in and supply all this stuff. And as a taxpayer and business taxpayer, our business has been in town since 1960. I don't think it's right that a job at Hempstead is going to be done basically without any Dubuque supply being given or supplying materials and being involved in it. I just don't feel that that's right. And I'm not saying, you know, you should give everything to Dubuque no matter what they're charging, this and that. But I mean, something should be done to see that. Some Dubuque concerns, like my own business and other businesses in Dubuque, are involved in these projects versus out-of-town places coming in and doing all that work and getting all that money. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address the board?
I move that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Are there any board members that wish to have any items removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Brings us to the Facilities and Support Services Committee report. Mr. Barton.
Yeah, I'm trying to get my screen here to...
Hit the tab.
Do what it's supposed to do. I move that the Board of Education award the purchase order to... Wait, let me make sure I'm on the right thing.
You are.
I am, okay. It's hard to just have a reference for where you're at on the big picture here. I move that the Board of Education award the purchase order to Novak Design Group PLC for an indoor aquatic center feasibility study in partnership with the City of Dubuque, 50/50 split.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education award the purchase order to Novak Design Group PLC for an indoor aquatic center feasibility study in partnership with the City of Dubuque, 50/50 split. Could we...
Kevin, do you have the cost of that?
Yeah.
It just says 50/50 split.
Approximately $80,000.
Approximately $80,000? Okay.
That's the total amount, I'm sorry? Or the square?
That's the total.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All in favor...
Just a comment, and many of us know this is an ongoing conversation with the city on what we hope to be an aquatic center that can serve the needs of the district. As well as with the city, it remains to be seen whether we can join those things together. But I think it's one more example of institutions working together to try to find a common benefit to the community. And I'm excited about this. We're going to need a new pool. We're not going to be able to sustain what's going on at Hempstead. And the thing continues to leak as far as I know. And having a new aquatic center in this community, I think, makes a lot of sense. And I'm excited to see what the, what comes out of the feasibility study. That's it, Mr. President.
Okay.
We already have a new pool that's underneath the existing pool.
Just getting access.
It's a scuba pool.
Thank you, Mr. Barton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the contract with Cone Incorporated in the amount of $31,128 for elevator maintenance.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the contract with Cone Incorporated in the amount of $31,128 for elevator maintenance. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve change order number nine to Portson Construction Incorporated on the Dalzell Field Renovation and Hempstead Field Improvements Project in the amount of $10,873.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number nine to Portson Construction, Inc. on the Dalzell Field Renovation and Hempstead Field Improvements Project in the amount of $10,873. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution approving construction contract certificate of insurance and bonds. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Dubuque Community School District that the construction contract and bonds executed and insurance coverage for the Hempstead High School renovation project as described in detail in the plans and specifications heretofore approved and which have been signed by the contractor be and the same are hereby approved and the President is authorized to execute said contract on behalf of the district outlined as follows. Contractor, Conlon Construction Company of Dubuque, Iowa. Date of contract, April 8th, 2013. Bond surety, Fidelity and Deposit Company of Maryland, $30,343,000. Date of bond, April 19th, 2013.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution approving construction contract certificate of insurance and bonds as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution approving construction contract certificate of insurance and bonds as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution approving construction contract certificate of insurance and bonds. Be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Dubuque Community School District that the construction contract and bonds executed and insurance coverage for the Forum Warehouse Asphalt Drive Project as described in detail in the plans and specifications heretofore approved and which have been signed by the contractor be and the same are hereby approved and the President is authorized to execute said contract on behalf of the district outlined as follows. Contractor, Drew Cook and Sons Excavating of Dubuque, Iowa. Date of contract, April 16th, 2013. Bond surety, IMT Insurance Company, $210,500. Date of bond, April 18th, 2013. Date of bond, April 18, 2013.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution approving construction contract certificate of insurance and bonds as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to go back and ask Sister Rita Claire at St. Pat's Grade School from the 70s how you diagrammed that sentence. Sister Rita Claire, I'm thinking about you. I move that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution approving construction contract certificate of insurance and bonds. Be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Dubuque Community School District that the construction contract and bonds executed and insurance coverage for the senior high school roof replacement project as described in detail in the plans and specifications heretofore approved and which have been signed by the contractor be and the same are hereby approved, and the President is authorized to execute said contract on behalf of the district outlined as follows. Contractor, Jim Geezy Commercial Roofing of Dubuque, Iowa. Date of contract, April 16, 2013. Bond surety, Merchants Bonding Company, $164,547. Date of bond, April 24, 2013.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution approving construction contract certificate of insurance and bonds as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution approving construction contract certificate of insurance and bonds. Be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Dubuque Community School District that the construction contract and bonds executed and insurance coverage for the senior high school restroom renovation project as described in detail in the plans and specifications heretofore approved and which have been signed by the contractor be and the same are hereby approved, and the President is authorized to execute said contract on behalf of the district outlined as follows. Contractor, Portson Construction Incorporated of Dubuque, Iowa. Date of contact, contract, April 16, 2013. Bond surety, United Fire and Casualty Company, $158,022. Date of bond, April 22, 2013.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution approving construction contract certificate of insurance and bonds as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education award the contract for the Marshall School Tuck Pointing Project to Allen Jackson Tuck Pointing Incorporated in the amount of $89,134 and approve the performance and payment bonds.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education award the contract for the Marshall School Tuck Pointing Project to Allen Jackson Tuck Pointing, Inc. in the amount of $89,134 and approve the performance and payment bonds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yep.
Motion carries.
IASB? IASB. Yeah. That's just on their, the Iowa Association of School Boards, as you know, those who've been on the board for a while, is an organization that we belong to in the past. And usually it's at this meeting in the spring that we consider our membership in that. We have not recommended, nor have we joined that organization for the past numerous years. I'm not sure if it's been, maybe three or four years. We currently receive very similar services from a group called ISFIS, which Kevin can tell you what that stands for, I cannot.
School Finance Investment Service.
Thank you. And so our recommendation at this point is to not consider our, the renewal or to rejoin Iowa Association of School Boards as we think we receive adequate, more than adequate, it's probably not the right word, through ISFIS in regards to school finance, legislative updates, policy primers, those types of things. Okay? Thank you.
Any discussion? That's just for information purposes. I take there's no action there. Okay. All right, new business.
I move that the Board of Education approve a resolution appointing Bankers Trust Company of Des Moines, Iowa to serve as trustee, approving the trustee indenture and authorizing the execution of same.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve a resolution appointing Bankers Trust Company of Des Moines, Iowa to serve as trustee, approving the trust indenture and authorizing the execution of same. Roll call vote, Mr. President. Oh, discussion?
Do we get a, how does that work, Kevin? Do we get a bid on that, or how does? I'm just trying to get a clear handle on this in my mind.
For Bankers Trust?
Yes.
Piper Jaffray is our investment advisor, and since 2007, we've run all our bond transactions through Bankers Trust as the trustee. I think most schools in the state of Iowa also use those if they're involved with Piper Jaffray. It just makes for a more cohesive situation that they're familiar with, the same person, same bank, doing all of these as trustees.
But then we issue the bonds to a different company, is that, there was a bidding process?
Correct.
And that's going to come later, right?
Bankers Trust is simply the agent that secures the money in and out for the district.
And they get a percentage of that, or what, how do...
Yes, there's a fee for handling those transactions.
Okay.
They also keep our bank, as we make payments on the loans, on the bonds, they keep the money until the bond payoffs.
Okay. And do they have all of our bonds, if you will, in the district?
They support all of our bond transactions, yes.
So going to someone else wouldn't...
Piper has never advised us to change that relationship.
I'll ask him next time he's here. Okay, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, roll call vote.
Mr. Barton?
Aye.
Mr. Baitin?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Kruger?
Aye.
Ms. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Strillo?
Aye.
Mr. Barton?
Aye.
Mr. Baitin?
Aye.
Mr. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Kruger?
Aye.
Ms. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Strillo?
Aye.
Mr. Barton?
Aye.
Mr. Baitin?
Aye.
Mr. Kruger?
Aye.
Ms. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Strillo?
Aye.
Mr. Barton?
Aye.
Mr. Baitin?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
I move that the Board of Education approve a resolution authorizing and providing for the terms of issuance and securing the payment of $10 million school infrastructure sales, service, and use tax revenue bonds, Series 2013 of the Dubuque Community School District, state of Iowa, under the provisions of Chapters 423E and 423F of the Code of Iowa, and providing for a method of payment of said bonds.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve a resolution authorizing and providing for the terms of issuance and securing the payment of $10 million school infrastructure sales, service, and use tax revenue bonds, Series 2013 of the Dubuque Community School District, state of Iowa, under the provisions of Chapters 423E and 423F of the Code of Iowa, and providing for a payment, a method of payment of said bonds.
Mr. President, Kevin, what was the interest rate on those bonds? Did we, was a bidding process on those? Do you have that handy?
I do not. I just, I remember the first seven to eight years was about 1.5%.
Maybe about a 2.3%.
Increasing to about 2.9 at the end. I think the overall average was about 2.3%.
And that, my recollection was a 2.3% blended rate over the term of these bonds, so it's an extremely low rate secured out over a period of time. Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Kruger?
Aye.
Ms. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Strillo?
Aye.
Mr. Barton?
Aye.
Mr. Baitin?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
I move that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action for students number 806733 and number 704168 and number 802778 at this time.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action for students 806733, number 704168, and number 802778 at this time. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Board member and administrative issues.
Mr. President, I would just like to recognize that you skipped the educational programs. The...
I think that was when my tablet was going.
My apologies, yes. That's okay. I just had two quick comments on that. We did meet a couple times as a group, one time to hear the hearings for the people that wanted to transfer or open a role. And, you know, it was a good, really good process, and we heard from, what, 10 or 11 families. And, you know, again, I think we came to some good resolutions, and hopefully you've notified them at this point. Yeah, so, but it was a really good process, and I think, you know, people having to go through it and sort of earning the right if they, if they wanted to do it, I think was a, was a good system, and we, we heard a lot of, a lot of neat stories. The other thing I wanted to bring up was, at our last meeting, we talked about the MAM programs and the qualifications, as well as the gifted and talented program. And right now, we haven't reworked it yet, but, but right now, there seems to be some really strict guidelines for parents. I think you have to qualify at the 95th percentile, and you have to take three different tests and all this sort of stuff. And, and the one thing we wanted to, you know, kind of get it out publicly is if a parent, or a student for that matter, wants to challenge the process, we encourage them to do that. We, we, we think there needs to be a little bit more wiggle room in the, in the process to potentially have more kids, you know, kids who want to advance and kids who want to participate. We want to, you know, give them the opportunity to do that. So right now, the, the rules and regs are pretty strict, and, you know, again, I think a parent could easily think their child would be disqualified, but we want to encourage them that there is, there is a process to, to, you know, to debate that.
Yeah, it's in the board policy, and it's just, we want to encourage that, that message gets shared from building principals, from the gifted and talented coordinator to the building principals to the parents. And there's a little bit of a disconnection of information being shared. So there's always a way. If a kid wants to try to do better or try to challenge themselves in the math program and things that they can handle and have high enough scores, for the most part, to do it, then we'll find a way to let them participate.
That's it, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Strillo. My apologies.
Just one more administrative item, if you don't mind. About, about six months ago, maybe even longer, the Hempstead put together an Interact program. Interact, for those of you who don't know, it's a program that's designed to work in tandem with the, with the program, the Rotary, International Rotary Program. And Hempstead was one of the first to do that in our community. And I'm pleased to say that Senior will be adding an Interact group. There's about 30 students at Hempstead, and we're looking to have about as many students at, at Senior. And inasmuch as there's two Rotarians on our panel, I thought it was worth mentioning, this is a great program that emphasizes leadership in the community and service. And I know that there are lots of similar groups all over the district, but I just wanted to call out that particular group and the fact that they're growing and working with the Rotary International to do some really nice work. In particular, Hempstead raised a number of dollars for an international program recently. And it's just wonderful to see the kids get involved at that level.
Thank you, Mr. Baitin. Any other in the board?
From the administrative end, we're at that great time of year where graduation's right around the corner, so you'll see listed there on May 26th, it's Senior's turn to be the afternoon graduation, so that will be at 1:00, and then Hempstead will follow at 6:00 PM. So if it fits into your schedule, certainly all board members are invited, and it's certainly that opportunity to see sort of the culmination of K through 12 education at its finest.
Thank you. Preview of the upcoming board meeting?
Really, June has two board meetings. The first board meeting is a typical business meeting. The second meeting, which is on the 23rd, 24th of June, will be an update on the strategic plan. So kind of end the year, if you will, with our fiscal year ending in June, with an update of where we've come this year, where we're at, and what obviously remains to be done. So two meetings in June, the 10th and the 24th.
Any other new business? Good? All right, we are adjourned.